Okay, we're gonna get started. Call to order the May 21st, 2019 Meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. We're gonna go a little bit of out of order to start. We're gonna start with new public hearing, 127 Marblehead Century One Realty Trust. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. My name's Attorney Rick Byers. I'm representing the owner of 127 Marblehead Street, Mr. Gene Fay, who's here tonight. We, I don't know if you remember, we had this property rezoned last year.
Right.
And been working with, it was Phil Christensen, and trying to get plans done. And didn't experience any negative reaction to anything we were trying to do. And then last week, we kinda went backwards, and then I did apply, we did apply for the billing permit, and in fact, I talked to, I've been working with Paul Hutchins on that. This morning, we got a letter from a Butters that have a lot of issues with what we're trying to do, so we have decided to withdraw for now, and try to work it out with the neighbors. This has been totally unexpected and blindsided this morning with this letter. So, and with the zoning board not meeting in July, and we wouldn't be on the June agenda yet, so we're gonna have a little time anyway before we go to zoning, so we thought, again, we'll withdraw and start from scratch.
That's great. So, I do recall that we rezoned this with something like this in mind.
Yes.
So, the concept is not new.
Correct.
I will say that we had the discussion when this was before us, and I think a little bit of town meeting, that, you know, you would have to apply to the ZBA to get the relief you want for multiple units.
Yes.
So, I would strongly encourage, I don't mind you tracking them, but that really needs to come first, because we're very unlikely to grant a special permit to something that isn't legally allowed.
Correct.
So...
No, I understand, yes.
Just, so, so this will be withdrawn without prejudice. The, there's not gonna be a record, so I know the letter we had received was asked to be made part and read into the record, there's not gonna be a record, but it will go with the file, and if the, if anyone wants to submit, if and when this comes back, that's fine, everything will stay with the file with this. So, this is withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, excuse me. Tell me what your Butters concerns are.
So, we're not actually gonna have a hearing about it, but there was a le-
You can talk outside.
Yeah, you guys can talk outside, and there was a letter that was written, it was very well-written and put-together letter, that is part-
I wanted to talk in favor of the project.
Okay, so, at some point, you'll be able to do that, which is not, we're not gonna have a hearing and discussion about it tonight here, but there is a letter that is online, or that can be shared from the clerk's office, okay?
Okay.
Great, thank you, though.
You'll leave it up?
Yeah. Great, okay. All right, yeah, anyone who is here for this and doesn't wanna stay for the rest of the enthralling agenda can check out now.
You don't, it could be enthraling.
I said enthraling.
I was being sarcastic.
That's just, that's just my nature. Oh, let's, I wanna introduce our new associate member, Kate Barnesi. So, this is Kate, everyone. Hi, Kate, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. Sucker. All right, 247 Chickering Road, Enterprise Bank, application for a special permit. Site plan review, special permit under 195 8.10 through 8.17, 195 10.7 of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes construction of a 3,200-foot square foot bank branch office with drive-up window. Property is located in the general business zoning district, and this, I believe, is next to the 99, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so, and this is our second time hearing this?
It is.
Okay.
It was opened at the last regular meeting on April 16th. If you want, I can go over kind of the overview of where we are and where we stand.
That would be great, thank you.
All right. So, at the last meeting, the hearing was opened, the overview was given, and the board expressed concern over timing of the lights. This would be the external lighting, which would be placed on timers, and it, the board just hadn't decided what time the lights would go off at night, so that was one of the outstanding issues.
As I recall, there were six, I think-
Yes.
-lights around the perimeter, as well as some smaller lights around the, where the ATM is, which was more just focused on the ATM.
Exactly.
Concern was more the-
The overall.
Okay.
And how those would affect the potential Butters.
The screening, right?
Exactly, and in terms of screening, there was a discussion on the fence. Conservation kinda weighed into that, just to give you an update. They wanted to know if maybe some type of evergreen would be more, would be more appropriate, so that's something that you guys might wanna discuss. Also, the application was going through peer review, so it went for stormwater as well as civil. There are no outstanding issues with the civil. With stormwater, most of the issues were resolved. There are a couple of conditions that are suggested. You probably saw those in your, in the stormwater report that was attached, but just to go over that, they suggested the following conditions, condition for mast dot prior to any land disturbance, or design a storm, or design a stormwater system that does not discharge to 125 or 133. They also recommended a condition require annual documentation for a sweep, a sweeping program. They also suggested that the applicant provide documentation regarding the Filterra treebox filters, and they also suggested that the applicant provide a budget prior to construction, and that's related to condition 4C within the stormwater report. This morning, new material was provided, which actually addresses one of your concerns regarding traffic, so a traffic study was provided. The engineer expects the project to generate a net increase of 36 vehicle trips or less during peak hours, and they categorize that as a moderate net traffic increase. So, that's some of the update that was provided just prior to this meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dawn Bornstein. I'm an attorney with Johnson &amp; Bornstein. I am pinch-hitting for my partner, Mark Johnson, tonight. Our office is located at 12 Chestnut Street in Andover. With me tonight is representative of the project engineers' office, MHF Design, and Luke Bichard from Enterprise Bank. I did review the video from your first hearing session on this matter, and my to-do list is very similar to Monica's, and I have just a couple of comments on that, and then we're happy to answer the board's questions and see where we're at on the project. So, on the, on the pole lighting, or the lighting timing question that was discussed a bit by the board at the last session, so I think I can report that the pole lights would be off by 10:00 PM, I believe that's correct, Luke? And the only lights that would remain on would be the under-canopy lights that serve the ATM, that's on the 99 side of the building. So, I think that's what the board was looking for on that, so we can confirm tonight that the pole lights will be off no later than 10 o'clock, and the only overnight lights will be safety lighting, in essence, under the canopy for the ATM on the 99 side of the building. For the screening or fencing question along the boundary, so the Conservation Commission did weigh on that, and they had some, some suggestions or requirements that they wanted to see for the types of planting on that boundary. They didn't wanna see an extension of a fence there, but they did, they didn't wanna see some planting, and I believe some more robust planting has been added to the plan along the boundaries. So, the planting has been increased in various areas, but pretty much all along the boundaries, and with the types of plants that the Conservation Commission was looking for. As for peer review, we were looking to come to a completion of the process with the peer reviews. We think we're at that point, so we did get final peer review letters, and they're, really the only comments were the ones that Monica touched on, which were the, which were the proposed conditions related to stormwater. I don't think we have any issues with the, with the proposed stormwater conditions, so those were all acceptable, so we believe we're at an end point with the, with the peer review. And on traffic, the board had some questions about volume and whatnot, so we figured it would be best to just give you a full traffic report. So, we gave you a detailed stack traffic report. We also gave you a summary as well. The net conclusion on the traffic report was that there would be no material impact. They did suggest some conditions within the report. They're, they're listed at the end of the report summary, and we had no issue with any of the conditions. Some of them are already reflected on the site plan. The rest of them, I think we'd be happy to accept as, as conditions of the board's decision. So, I think that was our, that was our homework list, and I believe we've, we've hit on all those, and if you wanna hear more details on any of that, you have questions for us, or if there's anything off that list, the board would like to hear about tonight, we're happy to do that, but we think we've closed the loop on, on several of the issues that were raised at the first hearing.
I would just say, I thought that the traffic study, having both the full study, which I read through, as well as the summary, was very helpful, so thank you.
Yeah, sometimes that full traffic study can get awfully dense, and to get the highlights-
It can, but it's nice to have that, to go back to if we need it, but, and then, you know, to go through that, and then to see what the summary says, so I thought, I thought it was helpful.
Yeah, and you can see, there's one, two, three, there's five improvements or conditions that the traffic engineer suggested. That's on the last page of the, of the summary report, and all those are acceptable. The examples are providing a bicycle rack, doing some additional signage, stop signage, and some, some other accommodations onsite, so all those were, were acceptable.
Okay. Is there any members of the public that wish to make any comments or ask any questions? Okay. Any members of the board have any questions or comments? Anything? I think, I think everything would, it's very nice when we ask people to do things, and they come back and report that they did them all, that, we like that.
So do I.
So, Monica, what's next? We have a, can we have a, do we have a draft decision, or can we get a draft decision for the next meeting?
We can get one for the next meeting.
All right, so I would ask that our system planner will make a draft decision, see if we can get it a couple days, so they can review it.
Yes, I'll provide, I'll provide that to you beforehand, so you have a chance to look at all the conditions, and of course, the board will review it as well.
And if we could incorporate the conditions from the stormwater peer review, as well as the conditions from the traffic engineers.
Okay.
In addition to our standard conditions, in addition to the 10:00 PM cutoff on lighting, and if you could just double-check the Concom's planting plan to assure for screening, and that's addressed. I think that covers everything.
Fantastic.
Okay, great job. So, our next regularly scheduled meeting is when?
July 2nd, I mean, sorry, no.
June.
Why am I saying July? Uh, June 4th.
Okay. So, we will come back on June 4th, we will have a draft decision, we will anticipate closing the public hearing at that point, and voting at that point.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Next on the agenda that I always misplace. 1725 Turnpike Street, AL Prime Energy Consultant, Inc. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, Monica, why don't you tell us where we're at on AL Prime's?
Okay, so this project was opened at the last regular meeting, also on April 16th. Overview was given. At this point, we were waiting for responses from police, conservation, and fire as well. We have comments back from NAPD, and their comments said they had no issues with the proposed project. They did say that all entries and exit lines should be clear of obstructions, including plants, fences, posts, et cetera. Building also weighed in, and just said that all frictions were approved by the ZBA, and fire had some concerns about a couple of issues in terms of safety, and they said that all, all their conditions were met, so they're happy with that. Stormwater and civil reviews have been completed, and there's several suggesting conditions that have been made, and you'll see those in the reviews that were part of your packet. If you want, I can go through, there's basically five suggested conditions, mostly from Horsley Witten, our stormwater peer consultant, and he, they suggest that the applicant, let me see, let me see, the applicant stated that they met with mast dot, and they wanted, they suggested that if there's any written documentation from mast dot regarding the suggestion to leave the current right-of-way conditions addition to the site as is, then those be provided to the town. They also suggested that infiltration pavement running is something that you wanna, want to discuss. They also suggest that there, that a condition regarding any construction-related vegetative disturbance be addressed, so I don't know if you wanna say something, we can, I don't know if you, how you guys wanna address it in terms of what you do to, like, erosion control, replanting, things of that nature. They also suggested a condition for storage and the management of potential pollutants. And, so those were the, some of the suggestions from the stormwater peer consultant. Also, you'll see in your packet, there were some photos that were submitted by the applicant to address some of the Butter concerns. So, today we have Tony Goopa from AL Prime.
All right, so, why don't we talk, so when I read through the stormwater comments, it looked like there were a couple of, looked, okay, first of all, there was a lot that, after back and forth, that our consultants said had been satisfied, so that was very much appreciated, that you guys went back and forth and were able to come to agreements or satisfactory responses there. There were a couple of things that seemed like open issues that Horsley Witten said, "Well, you know, we defer to the planning board, this is our argument, this is their argument, both make sense, we'll defer to you." So, I would ask you to address those issues, and then we'll go back, and we can talk about the sightlines and things like that.
Okay, so, it wasn't mentioned, but we got the second review yesterday morning, and I responded to that yesterday also. I'm not sure if you saw the response to that yet or not.
I'm looking at third peer review.
Third peer review?
This is dated May 21st, 2019, from Horsley Witten.
I haven't seen that.
Okay. It was dated today, so...
I will...
Well, why don't we do this? I think it might make sense for you to look at the, because that's what I'm asking questions about. It may make sense for us to maybe let you read that, and maybe we do one more, and then we can come back and talk about it a little bit.
That's, that makes sense.
Because it, it looks really good, there's just a couple of things that I think we have to talk about and figure out.
If, if, if I recall, after the second review notes in our response to them, there probably is only two issues, 4C and 5A, that remain regarding the-
Right.
-infiltration.
Right. 4C and 5A, yep.
And I, and if everything else, I mean, I'm seeing satisfied, satisfied complies, so...
Yeah, it's 4C and 5A.
Okay, so if those are the only two issues, and I had responded, I would be prepared to-
Okay.
-present our reasoning behind recommending not to infiltrate surface pavement.
Okay.
And I, I had touched on it at the last hearing, that basically, we are now gonna be infiltrating all the roof runoff, which obviously is clean, but at the gas stations, and I, I make this recommendation at all of our facilities, as I did prior to joining with AL Prime, make that, make the same recommendation at all similar-type facilities, is that we can certainly put in some kind of a treatment system, a storm scepter, or oil grit chamber, oil-water separator, and then infiltrate those, that surface water to some extent. My concern is that once you open a conduit directly to the ground, subsurface, with something that is coming from the pavement, you then expose the site to unexpected spill and long-term minuscule contamination. None of those treatment systems 100% remove everything. They'll remove it to 99.9 or whatever, so that, for that one-thousandth of a percent that's going in over a course of decades, it could be something that creates an issue. And we would, I would recommend that it's much easier to remediate and mitigate any kind of an issue if you keep it where you can see it, as opposed to putting it into the ground. So, I've always recommended for 30 years in doing this kind of work, that you don't infiltrate, don't use dry wells, don't use any kind of infiltration of the surface area. The roof area, no problem, the grass area is no problem, but the, the surface area, I don't recommend infiltrating anything along that line.
And what, and so what is your suggestion?
That, right now, we're reducing the runoff from the site from pre-conditions, just by infiltrating the roofs, because presently, all of the roof from the canopy, and all of the roof in the building spills onto the pavement, runs across the pavement, and it carries with it all the sediment, and any, anything else that might be in that at a greater extent than if the water that's just falling on the pavement by itself. So, by removing that portion of it, which in this case is approximately a third or so of the impervious area, by removing that from the equation, we significantly reduce the amount of water that actually runs across the pavement. By doing that, it reduces the amount of the total suspended solids, the TSS, that would get carried along with that extra water. So, we will be, in effect, having a better quality and a lower volume by the way it's put together now, and I think that Horsley Witten agreed with that, and just was wondering, you know, maybe you should go the extra step and infiltrate the, the pavement also.
So, if the water doesn't go into some kind of treatment system, where is it going?
Presently, it goes to the stormwater system for the state, in the Catch Basin, in the north driveway, and in the vegetated swell in the south driveway.
Okay, and in the new design?
In the new design, the pavement goes exactly the same place. However, we are, we're infiltrating the grass areas by creating a depression, so that water will stay there, and all the roof stuff is going to an underground storage unit-
Right, right. But what about the, the surface?
The surface will go just the way it's going now.
Okay. So, the question is, so, your point is, it's gonna be better, and the Horsley Witten is saying we wanted, in our, in their opinion, even better, better, and you're questioning whether that really is their solution that makes it better. Okay, fair enough. Let's talk about the pictures. Do you wanna walk us through the pictures?
This was submitted in response to concerns made by other people who spoke in opposition at the last hearing. That picture, for example, is a-
Can we start at the beginning of the photos? The first one I see is a picture of the gas station from 114. Street view. All right, great.
Okay, so this photo was submitted with the original application months ago, and it was basically just for your reference as to the, what the site looks like in support of the application.
I see, I'm sorry. Where, so where are the new photos?
Under a Butter comments.
Under a Butter comments?
Yes.
Okay. And are there newer Butter comments for us to review as well? Okay, great.
So, these are the photographs.
Okay, I, we can go through them.
Yeah.
I mean, there's only three or so, it's on.
Yeah, it's on, great.
Okay, so this particular photo, there was a concern about the presentation of the improvements to Colonial Avenue, and so this photo basically shows that as you're approaching 114 along Colonial Avenue, there is, there's a very small parcel there that presently is still in the name of the original developer of the site, and they've put in this landscaping, which basically blocks sight to the station. This particular picture was taken in the middle of November, and you can see, most of the trees don't have leaves on them, and the, and the low-growing shrubs don't have much vegetation left on them either, but there really is no visibility of the station. There's another photo that, as you move closer to the street, so this one here, I had to even go past the stop bar if you were stopped, and that other picture was a little further back than where you would be if you were in a car stopped at the stop bar. This one is past the stop bar, and I think there was a concern that the building, or any of the improvements on the property, would block sightlines to 114 north, southbound, and it's obvious, if you can see the one yellow, that's the existing sign, we're not proposing to do anything with that sign, and that sign is located right here, at the very front of the building. So, the building and the canopies are all behind that sign, or to the left in the photo, and actually would be behind the trees. So, from a standpoint of whether or not the building would provide any block or any kind of restriction to the sightlines, it's, it's totally, they will totally not create any kind of problem with traffic sightlines.
Okay.
And I think there might be one other photo, or maybe two. This one here is a photo taken in late summer. That photo is showing the existing, that will stay, screening at the corner, the southwest corner of the property. We have some toll-our-brevity, some rhododendrons, and those will stay behind the building, directly between us and our direct-to-Butter, Mr. Carter. I did not get it into the submittal, but I brought with me some additional photos. There was a question.
The chair?
There was a question that came up during the discussion last time about the lighting. I think they're all the same, yeah. Just multiple copies for the, for the board. There was a discussion that concerning the location of the lighting, what it would look like. Now, that's the existing canopy that's there, the new canopy will be very similar. As you can see, the light fixtures are recessed, so that they're flat with the deck, and as I had sketched, the edge of the deck sticks down a little bit below the deck, the fascia going around, so from a horizontal standpoint, there's no exposed lens light or glare that would be traveling horizontally from the canopy. It's all directed straight down onto the, into the area where it needs to be used.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Again, just like the previous applicants, I appreciate that you answered the questions and concerns from your perspective of what was raised by the board, as well as by neighbors. I know not everyone will agree, but I appreciate that you addressed them. Aaron, anything?
No.
What were the Butter comments? We need to look at those, or no?
Uh, there's nothing new that I see. The concerns that, well, we can, the concerns, some of the concerns that were raised were traffic-
Lighting.
Lighting, which I think we talked about, and sight, sightlines, which I think these pictures are helpful in our discussion. So, it was mostly lighting, sightlines, and traffic, I think, were the biggest concern, the biggest Butter concern. So, any particular thoughts on the stormwater issue? My inclination would be that, I, I think the applicant's response is sufficient, it makes sense, I mean, it could always be better, but I do take-
My question is, have we seen this done before? Have we seen a system like this put in before?
Uh, so they're not, they're, so the, yeah, I mean, they're, they're infiltrating on the roof, we've seen that.
Yeah.
The question is, do we, does it need to be even better?
Better, yeah.
Are we content that they're making it better than it is now, or since they're already, you know, taking steps and redesigning and asking for a special permit, do we really think it should be even better?
Even better.
And if, is the Horsley Witten solution even better? I, I'm not sure. Monica, any thoughts?
That I don't, if, if, I mean, this is something that maybe DPW could weigh in on, I'm not, I'm, yeah, I have no, no comments on this at this point, but-
Yeah, if you could ask them, I mean, I'm kinda 50/50, I like the idea of the further infiltration, but I think there's a good point made, that it's, I also don't know the costs associated with it, and how much better it actually, how much improvement, so if we could get some input from DPW about what that would cost, and what, how much that would make an improvement, and to address the concerns raised by the applicant, that it's not perfect, so are we helping ourselves in the short run, but not necessarily in the long run?
Is there any ill effects that we might not know about, or no, because we don't?
Well, that's the point that I'm making, it, it's not a financial concern of ours, and if this is something that's really a stumbling block, we'll go ahead and put it in.
Yeah.
We real, I personally recommend not doing it, because, as I said, you're just, you're, you're opening a conduit to the ground, and I hate to see that.
Right, yeah.
that. We try to seal everything off on the pavement. We caulk up all of the joints in the concrete, we caulk up, we have sumps around everything on the dispensers, we have sumps around everything, all the fittings on the top of the tank. And this just opens a way that if there is something, it's just going straight into the ground.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
So we would put in some interceptors. We have done it at other locations where it was demanded that it be done, so we would do it. I just recommend that we don't.
But at the same rate, it's going somewhere. If there's some kind of, for lack of a better term, containment, whether it goes into an interceptor, which may accumulate over time and lead to the ground.
All...
Or it's going into the storm drain and it's going somewhere.
Yeah. All of the existing conditions are surface impoundment, which allows the volatiles to evaporate and otherwise escape as opposed to being trapped and possibly infiltrating and affecting groundwater conditions. So that's where we're trying to, you know, in my mind, it's better to get it, even if it goes on top of a lake, it's better than having it go in the ground at the beach.
So there's one point that Horsley-Witten brought up, is that the water is currently discharging into the state stormwater system. And they said that they would suggest getting some type of written documentation stating that it's, you know, if they should still do this, if that's okay to do. And so if they, you know, the infiltration system would keep it on site, but if they don't do that, then some of it will still continue to go to the state highway. And if that happens, then they probably want some type of documentation saying that's okay to continue.
This doesn't really make sense to me. They're doing it now, it's going there now. Now they're infiltrating and making it better with going there now. I'm not sure why they would still need additional permission. Peter, any?
I was just going to say that as a general matter, I agree. If you keep it from going into the ground, you have other options. One is for the volatile to evaporate, and the other is for some, you know, immediate remediation. And if it goes into the ground, even if it's a very small amount, over time it accumulates. And then, it's a very difficult issue in part because you, it's very difficult to even know what has accumulated. So as a general principle, I agree with the logic. I would not have used the analogy of it's better going on to the lake, but then again, you know me.
Right. So why don't, if you could ask DPW to give us some comments on that. I lean towards the applicant on this, but having guidance would be helpful.
Do the homes in this area, do they have wells or are they on town water?
They're all water, town water.
Is there any members of the public that wish to make comment? Come on up. So we're not going to, I don't, I anticipate that we're not going to make a decision today. What we'll do is we'll have a draft decision for next time?
Yes, June 4th meeting.
And we'll take into consideration anything else that's said, as well as DPW's comments. Hi.
Hi. Chris Carter, 15 Colonial Ave. I'm the direct-to-butter.
Great.
Apologize for missing last meeting.
It's okay.
So I had a couple things I wanted to mention. So a couple of my concerns, the, I know we touched upon the lighting, and Mr. Guba here presented some photos. So I just wanted to share my side of the photos and to see that you guys could just kind of see what we're seeing right now and kind of what we're expecting. Let me just, so these are different photos?
Each one's different, but they're kind of, my side of the view, those were taken about 2:00 AM last night, is it?
These were taken last night?
Yes. So full moon's coming in from the side, which is why there's a little bit of illumination on that side.
Is it okay if I date these on the back?
Yeah, of course. I'm happy to submit in electronic copy, too.
That would be great.
I didn't know the protocol, so.
That would be great. I'm just going to date all these 5/20/19 on the back, okay? Just going to take a look and then we're going to pass the rest.
So as you can see, the canopy, the building itself is pretty lit up. So those are the flush lighting that are pointing down. There's a lot of light spilling in, into my yard and the canopy itself as well. So when you're doubling the size of the building, doubling the size of the canopy, I'm expecting that light to double, even though we have the new lights that don't actually are flush or, I forget how Mr. Guba ordered it.
Are you speaking about the light reflecting off the building?
Correct. Light reflecting off the building, the canopy's up even higher, so I think that's just kind of coming out and just pretty bright. So I know Mr. Guba showed the arborvitae's that are currently there. As you can see, they're not really sufficient. So I'd request that they put up additional ones. I don't know how many, if that's decided here or it's submitted by them, but I don't really know the protocol, but I'd be happy to make a recommendation if that would be acceptable.
Yeah, so you can make a recommendation. A lot of times, we either give a number, or sometimes we'll say sufficient to have, you know, sufficient screening amount. And sometimes what we'll do is we'll say, okay, it'll be 10, and then come back to us in six months and show us what it actually, how it's actually turned out, you know, once it's in place, to see if it's sufficient. But if you have a suggestion, go for it.
I was just going to say 10 to 15, but sufficient, I think, would be more appropriate in this instance.
Are the lights on all night?
You said they were taken at 2:00 AM. Is it lit up all night just for safety or like?
I haven't seen the photos.
Well, what time, does the gas station close?
Yeah, the canopy light should be off at night.
Yeah.
Are they on, are they on in the photo?
Yeah, we'll bring them over to you.
They were taken at 2:00 AM.
We'll bring them over to you.
Yeah, there's a strip of light around the building that does stay on at night, but not in the new building. So I could explain.
Well, I mean, honestly, the issue is going to be, what, I mean, there's, we'll show you the pictures, but there's clearly light that's pretty bright and pretty visible. If, whatever you need to do to stop that, if the trees do it, that would be great. So I'll show you, have luck, and Mr. Carter will continue, okay? And then just, if you could give those back to us, we could have them for the record. Go ahead.
So lighting address. The next instance is the traffic. I know you guys, I apologize if we're going back a little bit to last week, but the traffic. I just have a couple pictures from about 6:00 PM. This is a few months ago, just kind of a busy time. And when you're adding, currently, those are six pumps, I believe. So if you're adding four more, I think a lot of people are getting deterred from getting off the highway at that point because of the line. I actually had to jam my brakes on at that point, which is why I took the picture. You have more pumps, more of a line, it just, I think it's just clogging up. So I don't know if the planning board can still discuss how many pumps are being imposed, but...
The thing is, sorry, so I'm looking at you, because this area at this time of night is terrible. Agreed. But I'm not sure that that's the gas station's fault, right? I mean, because I see the, and I'll show it in the pictures, I see there's definitely lines in the gas station, but there's a line going all the way down somewhat regardless of the gas station.
True, but I think people...
So that's what we have to consider, is not whether there will be traffic, but what the impact, as you say, of additional pumps will be and how many trips that actually...
Right. Well, I think also the way the current setup is, is that people, they're off at any point, there's no clear turn off of the highway. And so some people could go here, some people go here, and it causes some confusion. There's no clear, like, sometimes you go up to a gas station, there's like clear lines with arrows and says you have to be in this line. And it really lays it out properly.
Yeah.
With the kind of confusion there, I think it adds additional traffic concerns. You throw four more pumps into that, I think it's going to be even more problems that might be able to be mitigated.
Yeah, I mean, it could, when he's done, if you could address how that'll be set up, because I think that's a fair point, is that you're coming down 114 pretty fast, you're like, oh, I need to get gas. And you go in and you, it's a pretty wide berth, so do you go in right at the very end and make a sharp turn? Do you go kind of wide? And then which pump do you go to? If there was, if you have suggestions for mechanisms of how people are going to decide where to go to, that's, I think that'd be helpful to address. Okay, great.
And my last concern was noise. The, I'm not sure where the generator's being placed. I saw that it was in the front of the building of 114, but I know there was also discussion about putting it on the roof. And I know there's going to be a fridged condenser on the roof. So my concern is the noise that would spill over into my property. Generators get kicked on once a week, if not more, for test runs and stuff. So I'd want to make sure that that was occurring at a okay time. And then the refrigerator condenser, I just, you know, if that's running all the time, I have my windows open in summer and I'm listening to a buzz that I don't really want to listen to because it's sitting on the roof. I find that to be a little problematic, so. I know with the zoning board, Mr. Guba addressed some mitigating things, but along the lines of the sufficiency for the lighting, maybe we could have some review after the fact to see that everything's, you know, being mitigated properly.
Sure, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
One over you. Come up, sir.
Hi, everybody. John Kendrick, 20 Colonial Ave, right across the street from Chris. I'm just going to repeat the concern of the neighbors about potential traffic. He's right on in terms of our fears about the traffic. As most of the people in this room know, it's a very residential neighborhood with oodles of kids there, coming and going and so forth. So there'll be the construction traffic, there'll be people perhaps parking on our little narrow street with trucks and automobiles and everything, making it kind of complicated for the children's lives around there when they go to get candy or something. But that's just a small thing. But the neighbors are concerned, and they couldn't all be here tonight, but there's a lot of apprehension about how the neighborhood's going to change with this. And I know you're looking at the environmental stuff physically, so we're talking to you about our emotional environment. The second piece is an observation and then a procedural question. How far in advance does this group send out the notices for, what's the standard operating procedure for sending out notices from a meeting like this to the butters?
So the first meeting, when the hearing is opened, gets noticed in two weeks?
Two weeks prior.
Two weeks prior.
So it's mailed out on...
To a butters within 300 feet?
Exactly.
To a butters within 300 feet, which is the requirement under the law.
Yes.
From there, no additional notices of continuations of the meeting are sent out?
Okay.
It's just if you, it just comes up, the meeting is continued, that comes in the normal postings and things like that.
Thank you.
So the original posted, first opening of the hearing is two weeks beforehand by certified mail?
Yes, we send it certified mail, and they're also sent to the Eagle Tribune and posted upstairs in the clerk's office.
Okay. I just want to make an observation. You probably know this, or maybe you don't. The post office might be shorthand, I don't know, but every time I get a notice, it's said that you tried three times to deliver it. And then they get, they call the one they give us, the final notice. Just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And there may be a breakdown in labor over there, I'm not sure, whether they have lazy summertime guys delivering it.
We haven't heard that, so...
Yeah, well, I want it on record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any additional public comments? Have you back up? Oh, one more?
Okay, the reason I bring it up is the last two or three meetings, not this one, but the last two or three meetings, we got the notice after the meeting was held.
Okay.
I'm sorry about the notice. I mean, we followed all the requirements. And actually, I think it's maybe a little bit outdated. I think just first-class mail with delivery receipt would probably work better than the green card, although you may not, you may be bound by that, by state law. I don't know. Okay, so let me, let me talk first about the lighting. One of the things that is happening now is we have a small building that's on the back of the lot. The canopy sits in front of it. And we have a light that wraps all the way around the building. During all the discussions and meetings that we had with the zoning board, one of the things that we did was you have the new building will be at the south end of the property and actually between the fueling area and the canopies and the colonial way. The new building is taller than the canopy, so as far as the light, the new building will actually act as a block to light from the canopy. As far as the lighting around the building itself, we agreed, and as part of the zoning approvals, that the building itself... Sorry, I thought I had a sheet that had just the, that, it's right there up on the sign thing, it shows it also. That doesn't show all four sides. The two sides, the one facing the street and the one facing north, will have a commercial, more of a commercial feel to them, whereas the sheet A2 in the set, which is near, next to last. Oops. Guess I'm just falling apart.
So to address Mr. Carter, right?
Yes.
His concern. I mean, there's some pretty, at least from the pictures, those are some pretty strong lights, it looks like. Do we know what those are? Are those car headlights or are those lights from the building?
I believe the lighting that you're seeing in that photo is the lighting that's wrapping around the existing building. It's, I don't believe that's going to be lighting.
And so you believe that will be blocked by the new building or won't be?
Well, the new building won't have that light on it.
Okay.
The side facing Mr. Carter, these two sides here, are the two sides facing this side and this side, will not have any lighting on it at all. Whereas right now, the kiosk that's located here has lights that wrap all the way around the entire perimeter. So the new building won't have any lighting on it facing the residential neighborhood in any way.
So what might we, a draft decision would have a condition that screening as appropriate take place? So if, if the building, if there's no lights and the building blocks anything from the canopy, then great. If more trees are needed, as would be right now, then you'll have to add more trees. Okay? So that might just have to be something that we kind of see after the fact of how it looks when everything's put together. Because I'm not going to tell you to put trees. If you don't need trees, because there's not lighting there, then, then great. But it's definitely a legitimate concern that we want to address.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. It seems like you've addressed it, but I don't want to say, go ahead, everything's good, and then come back with those same pictures.
Yeah, you want to revisit it in six months or something like that?
Once it's built and everything like that, and hopefully we don't have to, because he shows me pictures, I'm great, I can't see anything, you know? That would be great.
Well, I can't guarantee that you don't see anything.
I know, I know.
It's the standard condition that generally says, like, the planning staff will view the site and, as for appropriate screening and insist on more, you know, that type of thing, something more robust.
I want it a little, a little more aggressive. I mean, not that there will be no light, but that we've seen, is one of the findings of fact, that we've seen that there is some light pollution and that that will be significantly minimized by the lack of lighting on the building and any screening or something along those lines.
And then in addition to that stronger language, can we also have a revisit in six months or a year?
Yeah, from the time of...
Completion?
Yeah, or occupancy.
Occupancy. And could one of those review dates be in the winter when the foliage is down?
Sure, sure.
So in our first meeting, we were shown a photometric plan, I believe.
Yeah, it's in the set.
Right.
And basically, according to a photometric plan, there will be zero-foot candles. That's a little bit different than looking at glare from a light fixture. So we certainly will have no light on the ground on Mr. Carter's property immediately behind the fence. But obviously, there may be some reflected light or glare that would be, that could be transmitted, sure.
And I think you're, I hear you addressing it, so that's good. We just want to see it in actuality. So could we also, Monica, add a condition similar to what we did with the recreation complex, that when they come back for that review, that we'll actually have data that confirms the photometric plan as presented?
Yes, sir.
Is there a version of the photometric plan process which takes into account not only the light reaching the ground, but also reflected light, based on the design of the built infrastructure?
It's possible to get a photometric plan that gives you more than just foot candles on the ground, but it is so complicated, given all of the effects of obstructions, landscaping, and other items, that it's, it's basically impossible to do that. In fact, the photometric plan that you see doesn't take that into account. So you'll see foot candles where there won't be any, because it's not taking into account that there's something there blocking it. that there's something there blocking it.
Good question, okay. As to the noise, I mean, we have general noise ordinances that they have to follow, so, you know, that's Board of Health, right? I think, I mean, we have noise ordinances in town that require certain decibels at certain times of night and times of day, so anyway, we can put in general conditions about noise. Okay.
I'd like to address the comments about the number of dispensers, traffic.
Sure, yes, please, great.
Okay, so the question came up about the number of dispensers, and this is a normal issue, and we've talked about this previously, particularly with the zoning board, and we had our traffic consultant come in and make a long presentation about it. If you consider the dispensers similar to cash registers at a supermarket, adding cash registers doesn't make more customers, but it allows you to process the customers quicker so that the queues that would stack up are reduced. So by adding the dispensers, we're not necessarily causing more of traffic, what we're doing is processing the traffic that's coming into the site more efficiently. Now, it allows us during high-volume times, for example, at 2:00 in the morning, if the station was open, or let's just say 8:00 at night, if the station's open and there's no traffic there normally, having two extra dispensers doesn't do anything, it's a waste of our money. But at 5:00 in the afternoon, if we have people pulling in and they're queuing in line, waiting to go through, those extra fueling positions allow them to fill up at the same time, and it reduces the amount of cars that are waiting. And that's really all that those two extra dispensers do. We control, or the traffic that's generated at the site, the biggest metric that controls that is price. And we believe we're providing a value to the community with our pricing strategy. We could get rid of all the traffic at the site if we decided tomorrow to make gasoline $10 a gallon, but we don't want to do that. We provide competitive pricing, which is what makes it attractive, and people don't come there because there's more dispensers, they come there because they like the pricing and because they like the service that they get when they pull in there. We're not going to change that, so even if we don't build this station and we keep it the way it is now, you're still going to have the same amount of people coming in because of that same price that we have, that we will have in the future. As far as the traffic flow through the site, it's really not different than what is there now. Once someone pulls in southbound and they come in that northbound driveway, and you're looking at two, four lanes of traffic that you can pull into, it's very obvious. I mean, we can put traffic markings on the ground, but I don't think it's necessary, it's pretty obvious, you pull in next to a dispenser, depending on whether your car has a fill on the driver's side, which 75% of the cars do, or on the passenger's side, you'll pull in on the side that you want in order to get close enough to the dispenser to fill up your vehicle. And it's pretty common, most gas stations are set up exactly the same way, it's not anything that's odd or unique, or that anyone who pulls into a gas station is going to be faced with a situation where they look at it and say, "Okay, I don't know where to go." It's pretty straightforward and it's pretty obvious. As far as the generators and the refrigeration equipment on the roof, we designed the building so it looks like it has a hip roof, but it actually is a mansard, and all that equipment will be set down below the peak of the roof, so that there's no direct line of sight between any of the equipment and any of the properties that abut or are in the vicinity of the gas station. The generator is not going on the roof, the generator is going in front of the building. We originally had it in the back of the building, behind the trash enclosure, and we moved it at the request of the zoning board based on the comments that were made by the butters at those hearings. We also agreed, and I believe it may be a condition, the generator gets exercised once a week, that we agreed we would do that on a weekday in the middle of the day, as opposed to doing it in the middle of the night or on a weekend.
Great.
As far as construction parking and having that bleed over, we would be happy to restrict any of that parking. This is not a major project, this is a really small job. We're building a building that's probably smaller than most of the homes that are surrounding it by a significant amount.
Okay, that's right. Monica, if you could put a condition that the parking will not be on, no construction parking on Colonial?
And we'd be happy to abide by that.
Great, okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to put this over for our June 4th meeting, I'm going to ask Monica to draft a draft decision. You'll get to see that ahead of time, so if you have any questions or concerns, you can let us know at that next meeting. At that next meeting, we'll hear any additional comment, we'll then close the public hearing, and I anticipate taking a vote on the matter at that time.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
Just following up on the lighting, Mr. Gruber said the new building will block the canopy. That's true from where, the vantage point of where he took those photos, looking down at the end of Colonial. My vantage point is a V to those canopies, so perhaps we could put an ordinance that the hours would remain the same and couldn't stay open past 10, because if it does stay open later and the canopy lights are on, I would have that direct view.
Why does the hours affect that?
Why does it affect, because currently, he's saying that the canopy lights will turn off at 10:00 PM when they close. But if they remain open later for, I think, as part of the zoning board, they discussed that they would have the ability to stay open 24 hours, and I would like to, for lighting reasons, prevent that, based on that vantage point, because the building will not block my view of the canopy.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, okay, great, so continued until June 4th, 2019. Great, thank you. All right, 45 Woodbury Lane, Lisa Torbin Shaw, application for a watershed special permit under Part 5. Monica, what do we got going on with 45 Woodbury?
Okay, so...
Actually, hold on, so is this person not here?
They are not here.
So let's skip that to the end, then.
Okay.
If they're not here, let's skip that to the end. We'll come back and do that. Margaret Edgewood, 1755 Osgood Street, SBH Inc., doing business as Rough and Tumble Play Care, waiver request for site plan review. Hi, folks, you can come, you can sit if you want, or you can stand at the lectern. Monica, you want to tee this one up for us?
Okay, so this is a waiver request for site plan review under Section 195-8.11(c) of the Town North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes to operate a dog daycare and training facility within the CCD3 zoning district. The applicant has admitted this site plan review waiver due to a change in use, the facility that they're requesting to use actually was last used as a pizza manufacturing facility. The applicant is actually in town right now, just up the street on Osgood Street, and they actually received a waiver back in 2016 for their current location at 1636 Osgood Street, so they're looking to do the same at this location. Health reviewed the plan and has no concerns, they just had to make sure that the septic system, because this is on septic, is not in the way of the doggy relief area, which they determined it is not. Building reviewed the plan, and based on their parking calculations, only four parking spaces are required for this facility, and that's based on the veterinary establishment, kennel, pet shop, or similar establishment calculation. There's 21 parking spaces that are currently on the site, and this use is actually something allowed by right.
Any departments raise any questions or concerns?
They did not actually review this, so the site, this site was actually, actually the pizza manufacturing facility...
Straight on the Haverhill border, right?
Exactly.
Bradford Street.
Yeah, other departments weighed in back in 2016, when that facility went in, and that, during 2016, they received a site plan review waiver, which allowed them to not only operate the facility, but also widen the entrance and exit of the driveway from Bradford Street. They received some looting doc improvements, and they actually reconnected their access to 125 for the facility. At that time, when the waiver request was presented, the board asked for actually a courtesy notification due to the fact that they were asking for multiple departments to weigh in at that time. So they did a courtesy notification to the butters in both New Andover and Haverhill and Police, Fire, and the other departments weighed in at that time. But at this time, so far, building and, building and health weighed in.
So excuse me if I missed it, but what is it about the project, the nature of the project, that's triggering a possible site plan review?
It's the change in use, primarily, also, there is also a provision that in terms of, say, nuisances from, like, dog noise, that's something that might be considered as something to be addressed as well.
So, I think really my only concern is the noise, because, I mean, you're across from Osgood Landing, so I'm not really worried about them, and whatever mystery company may be there. No news on that, right?
No, we don't, that's another issue.
Start the countdown clock.
There are residents on...
There are residents on Bradford Street, and that does go up to a neighborhood, so if you could tell us a little bit about what you plan to do to mitigate noise, I think that's really the, that and dogs running across the street.
I actually spoke to one of them the other day.
Okay.
One of them is a North Andover police officer, he's the one on the corner.
Okay.
His comment to me was he has less, he's less worried about us because we won't have tractors and trailers going in and out.
Yeah.
From our perspective, the dogs are really, the building is semi-underground, so it'll actually be quieter inside the building than any of the other, the other building that we're in at Osgood Landing currently. And we proposed in the back to level down, so there's already about a three or four-foot berm from where the dogs will be going outside, and we're going to take that berm up even higher, so that we can make a level area for the dogs to actually go out. The dogs are also limited in the time that they're outside. Our hours of drop-off are 6:30 to 8:30 in the morning, and all of the dogs are inside until that point, so any noise that would go on with dogs going outside would be at 8:30. And they're usually, it's dependent upon weather, how long they're out, but they're out, go to the bathroom, maybe an hour, they're back in. And that happens on pretty much a regular schedule, which, then they come back, 12 to 1, they're in nap periods even inside, and then they go back out for an hour again.
And this is mostly Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, we operate 24/7, but the bulk of the activity goes on...
Is Monday through Friday.
On the weekdays.
Right, okay.
So other than doing a little bit of regrading in the back, is there any construction of note, any change to the buildings?
No, the building's actually set up perfectly.
Very minimal interior, interior's really well-made for what our use is.
It's kind of like a split-level house, so the back where the warehouse is, is behind the two-story part, and it's up a half a flight. The only change to the structure we're going to have to do is to actually put a door there, so the dogs are out in the yard and then back in, without having them running around yards.
They're all boarding, some are boarding, like evenings and weekends, right?
We currently, we currently are boarding at the Osgood Landing facility, and we'll continue doing that, and staff the, staff 24/7 when there are dogs in the building.
How often do you have them, dog boarding?
Pretty frequently.
Yeah, five, five out of seven days of the week, but we only board dogs who come to daycare with us, so it's a pretty limited population. During the holiday weeks, maybe we have seven or eight dogs, and typically, it's one or two. So we're not, we don't want to be a boarding facility, and we're not, we are not now.
We've never had seven or eight dogs at any time so far for boarding. We're not a 50-unit kennel that takes the dogs overnight.
Great. Anybody, questions, comments? Got a motion to approve the waiver of site plan review?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, keep up the good work. 723 Osgood Street, Stevens Estate.
Welcome, this is the planning board.
Hi! Be on this side of the planning board, that's fun.
Well, if I start, I will say this, that I've been looking forward to this night for over 12 years.
Well, why don't you folks tell us who you are first?
Sure, my name is Richard Korea, and I am a, I'm a commercial broker, I'm a commercial consultant, and sometimes developer. And I'm working with...
Regina Keen, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
And I'm working with Elegant Banquets, and they have, they open up wedding facilities, essentially, and it's very exciting. They have a facility that's very similar to this in South Salem, New York, and that facility's called La Chateau. It was an old mansion that J.P. Morgan had bought for his minister, and they took the property and they put an addition on to the property, it's on 25 acres, and it's very similar to what we see here at the Stevens Estate.
Maybe I can give two minutes of background, I'm sure you guys all are aware that the Board of Selectmen have issued an RFP for the Stevens Estate, basically because we're looking for the best way to have long-term stewardship of the estate, to continue to maintain the historical preservation on this estate, and have it be more well, better maintained than we could do as a municipality, and have an entity run it more effectively than we could as a municipality.
All right, and just for the record, for people that are maybe not be familiar, just explain what the RFP, Request for Proposal process involves?
Sure, so the request for proposal, we issued actually back in January or February initially, so it's basically, you put out a public tender, public bid, listing out your requirements, so we clearly stated in the RFP request, for example, that we wanted, there's a historical preservation on the building, that we wanted the trails, access to the public to be maintained, and so forth, so we put this out, following the public procurement process, there's a time period where applicants can bid. We received, received the bid from Elegant Banquets, but it was, didn't quite meet all the criteria necessary for us to accept the bid, nor did any of the responses, so we had to reissue a second RFP, so this has actually been going for some time, so I think the second RFP was put out in March timeframe or so. We again waited the time period, and we have Elegant Banquets now with us, who submitted, you know, refined their proposal a bit to meet our criteria, and here we are. We are very excited about their bid, their proposal, and now just wanted to meet with you guys, to give you a heads up as to what, what the proposal is, as we're doing a road show of all the different boards that would be interested and have a stake in the process, and helping to educate folks on what this proposal is.
Great.
Can I ask a question at this point? I appreciate you being here and informing us about this, but I have to say, from the discussions I've heard up until now, I just, I'm at a loss to understand, it seems like there was not engagement with either the Stevens Estate Board or the Historical Commission, and I may have misunderstood that, and so I'm, I'm just trying to ask, help me understand...
I am very happy to explain that, because that's not accurate. There has been lots of communication with the Stevens Estate Advisory Board at least, perhaps not the Historic Commission, I'll talk about that secondly. The Stevens Estate Advisory Board, I mean, there is a timeline, which we have out on the website now, the town website. There's a memo from Andrew Miller that outlines, it's a timeline from when we acquired the estate in 1994 to now, or, well, when he wrote the memo, like, maybe a year or two ago. And basically... And basically that memo talks about different points in time where he's met with the Stevens Estate Advisory Committee to say, we need to come up with a long-term plan for this facility. It is not feasible that the town can maintain this facility in the way it needs to be maintained. It's just not, I mean, the money that you have to put into it to maintain it, whereas in the municipality, we're not going to have, and the money that it earns, even when it was at its peak in making a profit, it was not making enough to really invest in the maintenance of the estate that it would need. We could do small projects, but we couldn't, we could never do like a very large project. And in fact, we have not maintained any, any building except for the main building. But the carriage house and the stable and so forth have not been invested in or maintained. We simply don't have the money to do that. So over time, and I, I personally was involved in some of those discussions when I first joined the Board of Selectmen with the Stevens Estate Advisory Committee to say, what is your recommendation? What should we do? I mean, advise us, should we sell it or what have you? And there was really, I mean, the answer was, well, you can sell it or we can continue to maintain it. There was not really a thorough response, I guess, back in terms of the, they could have, I guess, gone forward and been more proactive on saying, here's a proposal we think you should issue. But we didn't get that, so we took the initiative ourselves, the Board of Selectmen, to put the RFP out and see what we could get. So I would say for a very long time, and in fact, if you go back and look at the budget policy statements from prior Boards of Selectmen, so I went back and looked at a 2016 document when Tracy Watson and Don Stewart were on the Board of Selectmen, for example, their budget policy statement explicitly says, look for long-term ownership for the Stevens Estate, or something along those lines. I shouldn't say explicitly because I don't remember the exact words. But it's very clear in that budget policy statement issued by the Board of Selectmen that their intention was to find a better long-term solution for the estate. So that has been out there for a couple of years and we're finally acting on it now. The Historic Commission, I will say, we should have engaged them sooner. I think the reason that we didn't is, in our minds, well, I guess I can only speak for myself, we weren't planning to change the historic nature of it. We were planning to preserve the historic nature of it. So I guess that was misguided thinking. Clearly, we should have engaged them. We are doing everything we can to engage them now and get their input now. And I know they're having a meeting on this, they've been provided the proposal, they've been asked to give input to the proposal. They will have an active role going forward and all I can is apologize, all I can do is apologize for not including them sooner in this process. Is that? Could you?
So why don't you tell us about what is being proposed? And then after that, I guess I'd like to hear where we go from.
Yes.
What do we do and where the process goes.
A picture sometimes can help us get there. I'll show you a picture of the current Stevens Estate. There's that building, and then it would be a proposal to build in addition to it. So we're between 8,000 to 10,000 square feet and...
We actually have it down there on the screen.
Oh, okay. Wonder if this show up?
Yeah, you can put it up there. But everyone should be able to see it on both screens.
So the, there's the addition that's on the building, which BU had done a number of years ago, the plan that would be taken away. And that used to be the front of the mansion. And to turn that, such as that additions right in here, is to turn that backside now, back into the front of the building and use it as an entryway. And then over in here would be the primary banquet hall and also the restrooms and the kitchens that need to be done. And the beauty and the historic nature of the building itself, the Stevens Estate, can stay in its current form or better, being enhanced. Also, on the second floor, the plan is to have a room that's dedicated to the Stevens and the history of the property, have that open to the public to come and visit. If there's a wedding going on, you know, probably not then, but any other time. Essentially, the way this banquet center works, I first met them years ago down in Simsbury, Connecticut, and I helped them go through the process there. And it was very difficult for people to understand that Monday through Thursday, they're essentially closed. They have people working, doing prep work and cleaning and things like that, but they don't have a lot of functions going on. But Friday, Saturday and Sunday, it's weddings, bat mitzvahs, proms, things of that nature. And that's their business. They're not in hotel business, they're not in the conference room business. They are doing meals and events that are, that are taking place. They've had, they've been really good at working with the community where they will choose a charity and everything is 100% paid for by them and that charity benefit, you know, gets all the benefit of that. I'm president of Main Street down in Simsbury, Connecticut, and we have our Taste of Simsbury there every year. And that's our largest fundraiser, so that's a good event for us. They work with the Chamber of Commerce in having breakfast. They've worked with the Interval House on, again, having events there for, you know, for the benefit charitable group. And they own five facilities. They have two in Brookfield, Connecticut, one in Monroe, one in South Salem and one in Simsbury, Connecticut. Each of those communities at the, whenever you're ready for, we're getting, we're accumulating letters from the various towns and how it works. One of the beauties of the Simsbury one is they went onto a track of land. Nobody knows that they're there. They have, when they have a party, there are no windows that are ever opened. They keep it all inside. There will be no more outdoor weddings. Everything will always be inside. All the windows are closed. And John always says, the reason for that is they want the air conditioning there so that, you know, if you're up there and you're dancing, and he doesn't want anyone to be sweating, he doesn't want any noise seeping, going out. And they're very responsible in how they manage the entire event and the weddings. The, you know, the project as far as how to pull it all together, we've had meetings with Lynn and, you know, other town staff. There's a lot of questions about how to make it all work and fit and maneuver it around. And we met with tech, Peter Ellison from TEC, who did the work for the town about, here's the piece of land, we're still working with that. We have our challenges in terms of zoning and how, you know, how does, does this fit under the current zoning regulations? Does it not fit? However, they're not doing anything different that occurs there today. So if any of you have great memories as to how you originally allowed weddings to occur there, please talk to me at some point, I'd be very interested in that.
But before we get to that, a couple of other things about the building or the proposal that I just want to share. I mean, this is something like an 8,000 to 10,000-foot ballroom addition. So currently, you can have small weddings there, but you can't have any sizable, you know, wedding with large dancing space and whatever because there's no ballroom, obviously. So that's a huge, that will be able to, that will enable the estate to have larger weddings, accommodate larger groups of people, which obviously in turn is good for other businesses in town in terms of hotel state, well, we don't have hotels, but restaurants and other businesses getting the benefit of those people coming to town. They, they did, in our discussions, make very clear that they would still obviously support us in terms of an easement for access to the trails. And it's very important to, a lot of people that I've talked to, very important to be a part of this proposal. And they did say that they would have, you know, restroom facilities open to the public in some portion of this building so that, you know, there would be improved facilities for people, residents using the trails. Another really great benefit that they talk about in the proposal, which I think is, will be great for the residents of North Andover, is that they would plan to open the facility for key holidays like Easter and Mother's Day and Thanksgiving Day for, and have it act as basically a restaurant so you could go for brunch on Mother's Day or what have you. And that will really allow the residents of North Andover to be able to enjoy this beautiful estate, which really they don't necessarily get to enjoy now unless they are a guest at an event. So I think that's another great benefit of them having another entity operate the facility.
What's the ownership proposal? Like, would the town maintain ownership and it's going to be leased or?
Those specifics have not been negotiated yet. That would be part of the negotiation. But it's either a long-term lease or a sale. I mean, they're, they're talking about a multimillion-dollar investment here. So obviously, if it were, if it were a lease, it would be a long-term, very long-term lease, I think it says in here, 99-year lease, if they're going to make, you know, $6 million investment in the, in the building.
I don't really have an opinion.
So, that's TBD. But...
On aesthetics point of view, was there any other sort of thought to brick to match like the Stevens Estate or something that might complement like the architecture of, you know, the original building?
Yeah, actually, the architect that, these are all schematics, so it can all be changed. But the architect that we brought up here is a historic architect, that's what he's known for. So this is the first blush, if you will, at it or the first attempt. And then, you know, they're picking up the chimneys over here and the roof lines and things of that nature. So they'll get more refined as it goes. There's, I think a series of glass in here. And also they're looking at bringing in, redoing all the gardens. And it's something that's, this is constantly changing as we speak from day to day as far as... I was showing this to my wife the other day and I had it like this, and she said, well, where is everything because this is the view? So I changed it and put it upside, so I put it upside down so we can understand it better. But the entryway is, you know, you have the elbow now that comes over here and goes underneath. The proposal would be to bring the entryway through and have a receiving area here, drop off of guests, and then you have a parking area. This isn't the scale yet, it's all just, again, rough sketch. And then parking area here and a parking area here, a new area up here for people to go on the trails so they can park along here. You have the cell tower here that belongs to the town, you have all the revenue. It's just, you know, whose property is it on? Does it go onto this property and then it just stays with the town or how does all that work? You have the garage here. Off the map down here is the carriage house and then you have the stables here. And at some point in the future, the stables could turn into a ceremonial area.
So on the point of the lot line, I think if, at town meeting, you heard me say that the reason we wanted to withdraw Article 7 was actually on the advice of John Simons around the fact that the lot line might not be exactly as we had it depicted in the original article because we didn't have their proposal. So as he said, that they've engaged tech, which already has been involved with Stevens Estate and knows the layout of the space, to put their plans on, you know, to superimpose their plans on what they've already done and come up with the exact lot line.
Yeah, I just picked this up from tech before the meeting.
Oh, great. I haven't seen that. Perfect. Well, you can take advantage of that.
But, so, you know, this is, this keeps moving and because everything has to conform to your zoning regulations. So, you know, Peter has been working with this and he'll continue to massage this and we need something at least on the periphery by next Tuesday for your meeting. And so we'll let that put together. And then we have a lot of work to do from, you know, to move forward on this project.
Did you say no more outside weddings?
Correct.
And, I mean, just from my recollection, I've been there several times, that was always a big part of the property, was the outdoor venue, like space?
But people will still be able to look outside and to, you know, enjoy the gardens, the fountains, everything else, but the actual wedding itself will all be in the...
So people will be able to walk around the grounds during the wedding?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Could you do anything outdoors, even if it's not a wedding? Could you have like cocktail parties or gatherings or anything like that?
That's something, I think, especially when you look at the...
Because it's just such a pretty piece of property, you know?
Because you have, by putting the mansion back to this being the front, you have some beautiful outdoor facilities here where you can have even cocktails and pass around, things of that nature.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Lauren. I'm not so worried about outdoor. I think that that would, for me, be a draw.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a beautiful property.
Yes, very beautiful.
I fell in love with it.
It's pretty far back, if not, you'd really be bothering you. Okay.
So they're working with tech to get the lot line specific. So we would still have the two articles in potentially the next town meeting.
Like in June?
Yes, potentially. Because we're not going, we haven't discussed it as a board, so I can't comment yet. We're trying to get in front of every board as quickly as we can and have all the feedback that we can. So unfortunately, I haven't had a discussion with the others of my board yet as to whether or not we're going to put it on the June town meeting. But obviously...
Zoning changes though, too, right?
Well, sorry, no. So what we would put in the next town meeting, sorry, what we would put in the next town meeting if we were to, my proposal, I mean, I, it's difficult to, all this is just me right now, is the lot line with moving a portion of the land to conservation and the right to sell or lease. The zoning change required would be in the May 2020 town meeting. Because obviously, you guys would not be able to have time to do your hearings, I recognize that. But assumedly, if we all agree in the June town meeting that we have the right to do this and this is the proposal, then I think there's a level of confidence that Elegant Banquets would have to move forward with plans, assuming that we're not going to have a big problem in the 2020, May 2020 zoning change.
So, so that is reassuring for this board. One thing I would say is that, I know you said sale or lease is to be determined. I think you probably already know this, but having that determination made before such a meeting would be, I think, important to a lot of people. I think people, if it's definitive one way or the other, I think people are going to be more comfortable as than leaving it open. That's unsolicited advice, but you came here, so it's your fault.
I'll take that advice. I'll take it to the board.
So nothing for us to do at the moment?
What else can we answer? Anything else? Am I forgetting anything? Yeah, I mean, I think, if I could just take the opportunity for anyone who's watching to say, there's lots of opportunities to hear about this proposal this week. We're going to be at the Conservation Commission meeting tomorrow and there's two meetings on Thursday in this room, one during the day, I think two to four, is that right?
Two to four.
Two to four and then six to eight in the evening on Thursday. So hopefully, and then the Historic Commission is going to have it on their next meeting agenda. I believe that their next meeting was June 3rd. Don't quote me on that. And...
Conservation's tomorrow.
Conservation's tomorrow night, I think I said that. And then...
Stevens Estate is for June 12th.
Stevens Estate, yes.
They may want to meet earlier.
Right. Stevens Estate Advisory Board has received the proposal and obviously, you know, I'm talking to members of that board anyway on a regular basis, but they, I think are, we're going to try and advance their meeting because it's later in June. Yeah.
Is the Historic Commission the one you said that was brought in late that you said you didn't?
Yes, we've been talking to them anyway, well, at least the chairman, but yes.
So do you foresee or have they indicated that there's any big questions, concerns with them or have they not had a chance to speak?
I mean, not so far. I've had a couple of conversations with them and others, like on the Historical Society, other people who are maybe not on the commission, but in other ways involved in the historic aspects of North Andover. So I feel like we're answering a lot of questions. Certainly, there's questions that I think we're answering. So it just takes time, I think, for them to digest and make sure they're getting all their answers that they need, so.
Just a couple of other points from a hotel standpoint that are in the area. About a third of the guests that come to a wedding are staying at a hotel. The restaurant business, there's restaurants I know in particular that are located near the facility that will benefit greatly because they don't, they do not do the meal that before, they don't do the breakfast the morning after, that's all off. And... And they work hand in hand with people directing traffic to keep it in North Andover. And they also established a program with local high schools where if you have any type of culinary arts program, they'd be more than happy to bring those students in and have them as part of a program for the hospitality industry.
Oh, another thing I wanted to mention, too, is just that some of the other properties, if anyone's interested, they go look at the proposal and see the other properties that these guys run. But one of them, I think the one you mentioned in New York, that was the JP Morgan property, that's historic property as well. And they have experience working with the New York State Historic Commission, you know, like they will have to do with Massachusetts. So, I think there's a level of comfort that they know what they're getting into in terms of working with the Historic Commission in terms of a historic building and being able to do an addition in a way that's appropriate for a historic building.
And also, as we move forward through this process, all of you will be, are invited collectively to come together and, you know, we'll give you a full day in a tour of La Chateau or any other of the facilities that you'd like to see.
I have another question. As far as staffing, does Elegant Banquets provide staff that rotates in and out? Or how do you fit that need?
They have a full-time general manager on site. They have a full-time executive chef. Their kitchen is amazing to see. And to get out, you know, 230 meals within 15 minutes is like crazy. But, and to get it to your plate at your, you know, at your seat and it's still warm. They have, you know, they'll have at least 50 people working at a time. And that's, you know, in the course of a weekend, if you have a... If anybody has a... My youngest son, when he was going to college, worked for them in the summertime. He would go to work on Friday, and he'd come back Sunday night and have himself a good 30 hours. There's a lot of opportunity there for people.
So, he stayed on-site there or it was just...
They don't... Nobody sleeps there.
There's no staying overnight, correct?
There is no staying over. They will never... If you said, "Hey, the zoning that's there today works for Banquets," they're happy. They have no plans to come in and say, "Oh, we do, we want a hotel. We wanna do a B and B." Any of that, that's not their business. They do one thing and one thing really well.
Thank you.
Gene, anything else?
Thank you. Jim LaFawn, 329 Osgood Street. So, although I have the same street address, I'm not in a butter, so I'm not speaking from that perspective. Do I need to limit my comments to just things that the planning board would address since it's a planning board meeting? Or can I address other issues that were brought up by the proponents?
I'd say I'd prefer planning board-related and then anything else probably either addressed with them directly or in some other forum. I'd say anything more, we're really just here to learn about it, so I...
It's your call.
Let's stick with planning board-related zoning and just the plans that have been discussed.
Okay. So, what's the increase in percentage of impervious area? Like, how much are we gonna see a change in the actual physical site? How much more build... You said 8,000 to 10,000 more in building space. What's the current footprint of the building, square footage?
That building, the... That building's approximately 13,000 square feet.
The floor, first floor, ground floor?
I believe so.
But the BU addition, we've taken down. So, I guess some of the addition will be a trade-off.
All right. It just looks to me like the addition is bigger than the original house.
It looks that... It looks that way. I don't have the exact numbers. That's not my... No, I don't have that. We can get that for you. We'll get that for you.
Yeah, I think the... I think it's more like 5,000 square feet on the...
Maybe the entire building's 13,000. That's what my memory is.
But the point is, I think you're tripling the size of the building, not, you know, not half, not twice as much. And how about parking area, again, paved area? Any idea?
The... That's what tech is working on in parking areas.
All right, well, I think, you know, again, from the...
You're getting to the technical aspects. This is just the...
I understand, but you know, but plans were put out there, so that's all I have to comment at this point in time. And it looks like the parking areas are very big. And to me, that would definitely change the focus. And while I understand it's the prerogative of the Board of Selectment to make the decision whether to lease or sell the estate, I would encourage more what I would call little pocket parking lots tucked in the woods, you know, where they might accommodate 50 cars or something like that, rather than a huge expansive parking area. So, that's the point I'm getting at. It, you know, to make it look more like an estate than, you know, because an estate is, by definition, a large tract of land with a single family or a large home on it or a large building on it.
Just the one thing on that, I mean, just what I talked about there is that, like you said, a lot of people have been coming in for weddings, staying at hotels. So, I assume there'll be a shuttle bus or something like that coming along. So, if you had satellite parking lots, that could go and pick people up and stuff like that as well, so...
How many people would be the maximum? Like, what would the maximum size function be?
We've been asked in the town what you currently have been running there. And according to the materials that we've read, it says like 250 to 300 people. And that would be the same.
Okay. Again, I don't think that that's quite right because we're having a wedding there in October, and we were told that the max we can have is 150. So, I mean, the tent is not... I mean, I've already had one wedding there six years ago. I think it's the same tent. It's just, it's not that big, as you said, so... But again, I think that... So, would there only be one activity going on at a time?
Correct.
Okay, so there would be no one activity's leaving and one activity's coming? So, there would be no changes made to the roadway as far as widening?
There'd be no changes made to the roadway at all.
Okay.
Okay. It would still be the same 20 feet that's there today.
All right.
It's also intermittent traffic, so it should be the same type of volume that you experienced there today. Well, that comes to wedding, it's stagnant, and it's not, you know, 100 people showing up at one time.
Right. Okay. Just, again, as you can probably tell, I have concerns about this. My biggest concern, and this is certainly not a... Anything against the proponents, I don't know you. It looks like you run nice facilities. But when I first voted many, many years ago to, you know, as one citizen to buy the Stevens Estate, I think we were doing it to protect more than just the watershed. We were doing it to protect a historic building, which, you know, again, I have real grave concerns about this big of an addition and this much additional parking as to really being in, you know, in the spirit of protecting what was there. It just looks a lot different to me. And, you know, I guess I can be convinced otherwise, but it's a... It would be a hard sell. But the other thing was that it was bought, I think, within mine. And if you remember that town meeting, for those of us who were there, there was a lot of fervor about, you know, what the town could do with it and what we could experience there. Matter of fact, within a few years, we had a great outdoor concert there, Jonathan Edwards and Livingston Taylor. And, you know, maybe I'm in the minority. I mean, I've had now two of my children who have had their weddings there. My wife and I rent it out occasionally because we're ambassadors for our university where we graduated from. So, I get the feeling that, you know, I'm, and I think I'm a pretty average North Andover resident, I get the feeling I'm not gonna be able to afford to rent it out anymore. Can you tell me what the average, they get the La Chateau? How much does it cost to rent it for a day?
I don't have those numbers. I'll tell you why. Because depending upon the day of the week that you have an event there, they have their various pricing. But I don't think it would be cost prohibitive. They're essentially, I'm gonna use the word, and I probably shouldn't, but it, you know, think of them more as a wedding factory in that, you know, if you have a great experience here and it's the same price or lower than you can get from a hotel two towns away, and you have a choice between the two, this is a better choice.
I think that's a great idea. No doubt about that.
That's...
I guess my closing comment would be, and thank you for indulging me, would be to Selectwoman Keens. I would appreciate it when we do talk about this at a selectmen's meeting. I know the last selectmen's meeting, unfortunately, the way the agenda is structured, the very first item on the agenda is comments, public comment. I don't understand how to comment on something that hasn't been spoken about yet. So, I would just encourage you to put it, like tonight, right after the hearing so that we can address as more information comes out from the proponent, we can ask questions about it at that time. Thank you.
Jim, also, anytime you'd like to meet, I'll be happy to meet with you and also set it up with John and Simon to meet with you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Good feedback.
All right. Let's do 45 Woodbury Lane. The continued public hearing.
So, at the last regular meeting back on April 16th, this project was brought before you. And what it is, it's a two-story addition. It's a 325... I'm sorry. It's a 17 by 21, two-story addition within the non-discharge zone of the watershed protection district and the R3 zoning district. The board heard, opened the hearing, heard all comments, and then asked me to prepare a draft decision.
Is this the one where they already had the deck and they were closing it?
No.
Which one is this? I don't remember this one.
Okay, they had an existing... Actually, I can bring that up, their plan, too. So, it is existing structure. And off the side of the structure, they're proposing to put a two-story addition. I'll bring up the plan if you give me one moment.
I just don't remember this one.
Let me see. Here we go.
I don't remember this one, though.
And... Here we go. Okay, so I'm about to cast that.
Were they here and did they speak about those?
They did. So, their engineer, Jack Sullivan, came to speak on this. This was the plan that was presented in front of you. I'll bring up the locusts as well, locusts as well. Okay. Bring that up, just to get an idea of where this is located. One thing that was brought up was the roadway easement.
That looks nice.
Not quite.
Say, made a wall like that would be great.
So, that's the locust map. John did bring up the ancient roadway easement that exists on the... On the property, which he said will probably never be enacted. But that was some historic knowledge that he shared here.
Clarification, just looking through the agenda and then versus the draft decision. I see in the agenda, it says a two-story addition in the non-discharge zone, but findings of facts say the proposed work is located within the non-disturbant zone.
It is not. It's in the non-discharge zone. I will correct that. Thank you.
There's number paragraph four.
Thank you.
In my company, I...
No, 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 it's fine. I'm just trying, I'm tired.
Mike, were there any issues from any departments or from planning about this?
No, not at all. The last department we were waiting to hear back from was police, and they said, "We have no issues with this at all."
And stormwater satisfied as well?
Yes.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to that effect. Close the public hearing on 45 Woodbury Lane, watershed special permit.
Do we get a second? Call in favor?
Aye.
Review the draft decision.
So, in number one, referring to extensive discussions, the implementation of best management practices? Which ones?
Let me see, I didn't have that. Let me see. Other than the infiltration system that was designed there, which is the... Please, one second. See, I apologize there. Oh, there it is. Other than the drywall, which is collecting the roof runoff, and that's listed in number three.
So, I guess to Peter's point, is there some kind of document that should be referred to more specifically, either in that paragraph or elsewhere?
Okay.
That kind of binds them to that practice?
Okay, like they're O and M, basically.
Well, it talks about extensive discussions and best management practices, plural, but it doesn't sound like that's what happened.
And basically, their stormwater capture is limited to the roof runoff collection and recharge, which is distributed into the concrete drywall. Other than that, there's no other stormwater management proposed for this.
So, is the concern the language or that the design isn't sufficient?
Well, the concern is that we're premising our action here that there's been extensive discussion with best management practices. And it sounds like there hasn't been.
So...
So, it's not just the language. It's sort of a reassurance here that all this has been done. And it doesn't sound like it has been.
Yeah, it's been reviewed by the peer review consultant, so that was the discussion aspect.
So, it sounds like it's either there should be an artifact of that best practice or that that language should be something different.
Is it like number 14, though? I don't know if this independent construction monitor person is...
Well, I got another comment about that. That's standard. We appoint that.
We did that, okay.
But this seems to depart from what we've been doing for the last several years. Four or five years ago, if my memory serves me, the applicant would designate as this says. But I thought we changed that to say that this is a responsibility of the planning department to designate the independent construction monitor. And because it's kind of a conflict of interest, if the applicant appoints the monitor, it's like the applicant is hiring the monitor. And what are they monitoring if the person they're supposed to monitor is the person who hired them?
Yeah.
And this is a discussion we've previously had. I don't understand, like, this looks to me like it's a changed wording from what we have been using.
Yeah, this is pretty much the standard language. It was taken from another project approved about a year ago.
It says in consultation with the planning board. How does it actually happen?
So...
But actually, literally, what happens?
Typically, for residential project, they might use their, the engineer that designed the project and designate them to be the construction monitor. Or if it's someone that, you know, something's small enough, I might... They might come in and say, "Hey, do you have a list of engineers that have done work on the project?" Also, some of the smaller projects, you've also designated planning staff to do monitoring. But again, that was something that the board determined was appropriate.
Sure. But my point is that unless my memory is off here, this is not a new discussion. We talked about this years ago, and I thought we addressed that we had to remove this conflict of interest. Can I ask Jean for her recollection on this? Sure. Jean, am I off base here?
No, I'm bringing up the decision.
This is in paragraph 14, so to your point, I, I thought we had changed that approach. And if it's gone back to what it had been years ago, I would have to question why. But I still want to go back to number one. It's true that part of it is the wording, but it's more than the wording. So you said that this, for paragraph one, that it was peer review?
Yes.
And?
We have, yeah, there was peer review by SSV Engineering.
Okay.
That's correct.
Which we have the letter here.
Where is that?
Stormwater review. Stormwater.
Got it, thank you.
So it looks like there.
So maybe what we do is we just refer to that.
Yeah, that's our, that's our artifact of best practice.
Okay. So at the rear, it says there's also, other than changing, because again, this was pretty standard language, and there's a date indicating a final email okaying the, you know, the alterations that were made. Would you like something more, something more robust than that? What are you looking for?
Well, so, I mean, I think we can keep it as what number one says, but just like in number four, you say it's the email from SSV. Just do see March 19th, 2019, letter from SSV, and April 11th, 2019, letter from Sullivan Engineering Group.
Okay.
So we have our documentation of that's all.
Okay.
So then I think, my other question, you know, as part of Laurie's as well as the wording here. Jean, can you help me with this?
So we have an independent monitor form, trying to cast it, I don't know that it can. It, it's the same form, Peter, I think the language is the same. They designate someone and then they sign the form, committing that they're acting on behalf of the town. Hold on one second, I'm just.
Well, I have a different recollection going a couple of years back, but maybe, maybe I'm not recollecting it correctly. I'll.
I don't know why the sources aren't available to cast, but.
Say that again, I couldn't quite hear.
I'm, I'm trying to cast it, but.
I'm trying to exit out.
Does it, does it independent construction monitor form, that's the form that you established, that's what they sign? And the language in it, it's agreement between the above-named independent monitor and the North Andover Planning Board for Monitoring Services to be provided at the above-mentioned project. The acknowledges and agrees that he or she is providing monitoring services for the benefit of the town of North Andover and is not the project owner or applicant, and does not have financial or personal interest in the project. It goes on, but that's the form that is being referenced.
Person being designated is the project engineer. If the applicant designates a project engineer, which is Monica said, they do have a financial interest. So how can we have a form that says you don't have a financial interest?
At that point, they've, they've been through permitting, so they are the most familiar with the project and the permit aspects. But they're signing that they're off, they're acting on behalf of the town at that point.
Well.
But.
I don't want to be argumentative about it, and really, my point was not the form. My point was, who is responsible to designate them? And I thought we discussed this a couple, several years ago, and came to agreement that it should be the planning department that designates them, not the applicant.
Okay. We can look back on it, it's all, it's before me, we can look back on that.
Yep, and I, I'm not looking to hold this up, but.
So let's look back at the, at least, let's look at the last couple watershed special permits that we've had, to see what the language says, and we can comparison, and then we can, and one of.
And, and the language to the point of who's appointing the independent monitor, is it the applicant or is it the planning department? That's the language.
The applicant recommends someone, so they ask if this person would be okay. Monica, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they come to you and say, this is who I want to designate. And you either agree or disagree with who they're gonna designate. I don't know, Peter, that we have people, I mean, we don't source that person. They come to us and ask, can we use this person?
Well, I thought we had gone over this before, maybe, maybe I'm miss.
So why don't you look back, see, maybe talk with someone, talk with John, see if anyone remembers.
Yeah.
And then maybe we can put it on an agenda a few weeks to evaluate if we, even if we haven't changed it, we can have a discussion about whether we should.
I think that'd be helpful.
Okay. So why don't we see what the practice has been last year or so? And then we can go back and see if there's any memory, and then we can have a discussion. Maybe it's something along the lines of, you know, applicant designates with the consent instead of consultation of the planning director. We, we can talk about it and figure something out.
Okay, great. So can we get a motion to approve the watershed special permit for 45 Woodbury Lane?
I'll make a motion to approve the watershed special permit for 45 Woodbury Lane, as amended. I remember the paragraph four changing non-disturbance to non-discharge. And then the comments you made regarding documentation, you can add those in there. So as amended.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, two more items, and we'll get out of here. Oh, I said nine o'clock, I was so close. Elections, so first we'll do CPC. So is it every three years, the CPC? Is it a three-year appointment? Is it one-year appointment, two-year appointment? Do we have a set time period?
I'm not sure.
Let me look that up, hold on. So.
I thought it was annual myself, but I'd, I'd have to look it up.
North Andover Bylaw Community Preservation, let me see if I can find it. So we, we appoint a, one of our members to be on the Community Preservation Commission. My computer just closed down, so if someone can maybe find that, if it says in the CPC bylaw how long that term is for? If it says, I hope it says. Anyway, John Simons is our current appointee. I spoke with him about this, that we, at least in the last, at least the two years that I had been on, we haven't remade it. And I was told that his appointment is running up, so I assumed, that's why I assumed it was a two or three-year appointment. I spoke with him, he'd like to continue in that role. From what I've seen, I think he does a great job in that role, having the consistency. And then his knowledge is, I think, very important, because there are a lot of projects that span over a period of time. And also, as we've seen with the Recreation Complex, sometimes not approving projects, which is hard to do, is important, so we can save a lot of money to do a really important project. So I would make a motion to reappoint John Simons to the Community Preservation Committee as the planning board appointment, subject to whatever time limits are established by the CPC. Let's see. Do we have a bylaws?
Doesn't it, at the bottom of that list, have the expiration?
It does, and three of the members are 2021.
So that's 20.
Three of the members.
Right, he's expiring, the, all the rest are 2021, so I gotta assume that's a three-year.
Yeah.
So let's, so to term to expire June 30th, 2022. So I'll make that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll sign people up for stuff when they're running.
I, I do have email correspondence that he did agree to that. As well as the following items. Well, we're also going to do board elections here, so we did this last year. So we don't have to change any positions, but we can, so people's thoughts, if anybody wants, wants a gavel, speak now.
I think you've done a fine job, and I'd like to see you continue.
Okay. Anyone want, so can we make a motion, I guess, to that effect?
I'd also like to comment that I'd be happy to give someone else the opportunity to experience vice chair.
Aaron, I was going to nominate you for vice chairmanship.
And I would second that.
Vice chair.
Yes.
So can we, motion?
I don't even know what vice chair is.
Well, I'll tell you that.
Details, details, details. I'd like to make a motion.
I like to know what I'm getting myself into.
Really, in, in the situation where the chair is not available to run the meeting, then you would be responsible for running the meeting?
I think I can handle it.
Other than, and, you know, that hasn't happened yet, it will happen on July 2nd. But.
Full disclosure.
Full disclosure. But other than that, that's about it.
Well, first things first, I would be willing, if, if, Peter, did you make a motion to any kind of?
Do you want to make two motions?
I'd like to make, how about one single motion?
One single motion works.
To renominate chair and nominate for vice chair for the coming year. And when is that effective?
I'd say June, June 30th, June 30th?
Right, so effective July 1st, start of the fiscal year.
Start of fiscal year, perfect.
All right.
All right, I second that.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
I feel like your shoulders are lifted.
It was a great experience.
We'll see how it goes.
Meeting minutes, what can we approve?
So it would be the April 16th and the April 30th, and next week, I promise I will have the May 7th and May 14th.
Okay, motion to approve.
No, I'm sorry, but after this, I just have one item to add.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the April 16th and April 30th meeting minutes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Jean, what's up?
So I know this is crazy, but I was at home watching the start of the meeting, deciding when it was going to arrive. And I noticed the request to withdraw for 127 Marblehead, which I assume they filed the form with you.
They did, I have it right here.
Has it been timestamped at the clerk's office?
It has not been timestamped.
And was there a motion to accept the request to withdraw without prejudice? I don't believe there was a motion.
No, there was not, we, thank you.
So, so the form itself, either the planning board or the planning board agent needs to sign the form? And the applicant, I assume, signs saying he's requesting it?
Yes.
And then there's three choices. By my above signature, I hereby agree to the following. One, that the vote is with or without prejudice, and so we would normal circle one or the other. And so I would just recommend you make a vote, and I don't know if you want to do that tonight or at your next meeting, but, thank you.
Allow or recommend.
To accept the request to withdraw without prejudice.
To accept the request for 127 Marblehead to withdraw without prejudice, which is what we did indicate.
Second.
Yeah, I don't think we made a motion.
Just wasn't, it wasn't a vote taken, that's all, yeah.
Motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, adjourn, the meeting tonight, meeting first of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.